Good morning. In accordance with Sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act nineteen ninety as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. My name is Zaher Brait and I will be chairing today's session. Panel members today are Peter Reed, Larry Clay, Gary McKay, and Dylan Reed, and the Deputy Secretary Treasurer is Sabrina Salatino. We acknowledge the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishna Bagh, the Chipewa, and the Haudenosaunee, and the Wampanoag peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen of the Mississaugas of the Credit. Committee of Adjustment public hearings are now conducted in hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person, and others will participate virtually by electronic means through WebEx. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connecting with a computer or telephone and have the option of participating via video or audio only. When your item is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator. For in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must fill out a decision request card, and those participating virtually need to submit a written request for a decision by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto local appeal board body, or in some limited circumstances to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons and public bodies are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. Today I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. Where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired. When the committee does not require presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. Pardon me. I will comment when you are reaching the five minutes. Any presentation or other materials you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and committee members cannot accept materials after hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and will make a presentation to the committee on the application. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we first call on speakers in the hearing room and then those participating through WebEx. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. Pardon me. When all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion. The application will then be taken into committee for a decision. Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, are there any minutes of the last meeting that require adoption?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and panel members. Yes, the July ninth hearing.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to adopt the minutes as presented? Thank you, Mr. Reed. And Mr. McKay seconds. Are there any declarations of interest of panel or staff members today? I see none. Thank you. Are there any files to be closed? Oh, I beg your pardon. Deferrals. I forgot to ask about deferrals.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I don't see any files to be closed this morning, and yes, there are three deferrals for this morning. Item number eight, three Rose Cliff Avenue, file number A zero three three nine slash twenty-five T E Y. Item number nine, five Rose Park Crescent, file number A zero three four seven slash twenty-five T E Y. And item number sixteen, one three seven Church Street, file number A zero three seven two slash twenty-five T E Y. Through you, Mr. Chair. We can probably deal with all three requests for deferral at this time.
Thank you. Do you want me to just check on files to be closed before we move to deferrals, Madam Deputy Secretary?
Sorry, say that again?
You want to just check to see if there are any files to be closed before?
No, through you, Mr. Chair. There are no files to be closed for today's meeting.
Then we'll deal with the deferrals first. Let me just read them into... into the record. Item number six, eleven seventy-two Davenport Road. The committee had before it the following communication.
Chair, I think it's number eight. I think number eight is the first deferral.
I beg your pardon?
I think number eight is the first deferral.
Oh, number eight. I'm reading the wrong one. Oops. Thank you. Thank you. Item number eight, three Rose Cliff Avenue. The committee had before it the following communications. Revised site plan, floor plans, elevations received January second, twenty twenty-five. Five photographs of the subject property received May seventh, twenty twenty-five. Three photographs of the rear subject property received July second, twenty twenty-five. Covering letter from Cesar Alacon, the agent, received January third, twenty twenty-five. And a deferral request from same agent received January the eighth, twenty twenty-five. And there's an order to comply as well. Then there's correspondence in concern from Carmela Sturino, nineteen twenty-five Davenport Street, received on July the seventh. Do we have the agent with us?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent online. No registered speakers for this item.
Thank you. Hello, good morning.
Good morning. My name is Cesar Alacon on Tiberos. My address is fifty-nine Lap Street.
Thank you very much. So you're requesting a deferral today?
Yes, yes. Due to an oversight, the required sign was not printing the correct size and needs to be reprinted.
So the sign wasn't posted appropriately, I take it?
Yes. So we are doing the changes, and we ask for a deferral for that issue.
Thank you very much.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We're able to reschedule this application to our August twentieth hearing because it's the... they haven't posted the sign, so it's improper notification, so it's automatic deferral.
Thank you.
Chair, can I just ask a question? I was just noticing that... So is the garage already built? You've got an order to comply, right?
Yes.
So this is to legalize?
Through you, Mr. Chair, yes. That's going to be the other amendment to the purpose would be to legalize and to maintain because there is an order to comply on the site. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Thank you. Okay. We don't have anybody in opposition to this and no other speakers. So I wonder if I could move to committee and look for a motion to defer.
Thanks, Chair. I'm happy to move deferral for technical reasons to allow for proper signage.
Thank you very much. Bear with me.
Second motion.
Thank you, Mr. McKay. Mr. Reed moves the motion. And Mr. McKay seconds. Always in favor of deferral. Thank you.
Chair, can I just add a comment maybe to the agent that when you do return in your cover letter, maybe you could just take a couple moments to explain how the garage was built without a permit?
Sure, no permit.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now we move on to item number nine. Item number nine is five Rose Park Crescent. The committee had before it the following communication. Copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations. Redline public notice received July second. Revised site plan, floor plans, elevations received July second. Four photographs of the subject property received May the thirtieth. Two photographs of trees on the subject property received May sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. And a deferral request from the agent received on July the third. Actually, there seems to be two deferral requests. One received on the third of July and one on the tenth of July. Okay. Is the agent online?
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair. We also have some commenting reports, emails from...
I beg your pardon?
Yep.
Yeah. We have commenting agency reports from community planning received July second. Transportation engineering received July seventh. Staff reports from urban forestry received July ninth. Community planning report received July the seventh. We also had one correspondence in support and one item of correspondence in opposition.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent online. No registered speakers for this item.
Okay. Good morning. Is that Joe?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. My name is Joe Iozzo of one six seven Richmond Street East.
Thank you. Mr. Iozzo, I think we do have one person in opposition, so we may have to go to them. Oh, no?
No, we don't. We don't have any speakers.
No speakers, thank you. So I wonder if you could just give us a brief response as to why you need the deferral?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. There are two points for the deferral. The first one was we obtained a letter of opposition to our application, and we are requesting more time to evaluate the situation and come up with a solution that would be both beneficial to the applicant and the community. And the second item is that the signage was not posted in the required time.
Okay. Thank you. Bear with me. Thank you. Do we have any questions for the agent? None? Okay. So we'll take it into committee and look for a motion to defer. Thank you, Mr. McKay.
Yes, I think for good reason, we should defer this item, item nine, at five Rose Park Crescent. I defer it to a further meeting of committee.
Thank you. Do we have a second there? Thank you, Mr. Reed. Always in favor of deferral. Thank you. This item has been deferred. And then we move on to item number... Item number sixteen is one three seven, one three nine, one four one, one four five, one four nine Church Street and eighteen and twenty Del Housie Street. Committee had before it the following communication. Copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations. Four photographs of the subject property received April twenty-ninth. Covering letter from the agent received April twenty-third. There's also decision number affecting the subject property. There's also comparables submitted by the agent received June the twentieth. And subject-specific bylaw, Ontario Land Tribunal decision affecting the subject property. Presentation materials from the agent received July the tenth. We also have staff reports from Heritage Planning received June... July... sorry, June twenty-seventh. And correspondence, staff report from community planning received July eighth. We also have an advisory staff report from the project analyst for Metrolinks received on July the ninth, twenty twenty-five. We also have correspondence in opposition, but the address has not been provided, from Tom Zhou, received July the third, twenty twenty-five.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent here in person. No registered speakers for this item.
Sorry, bear with me. And you are Mr.?
Pino Dimasio, S V N Architects and Planners, one ten Adelaide Street East.
Sorry, I'm just wondering. It looks like I'm missing your name on my sheet here. Oh, right at the top? Oh, it's item sixteen. Sorry, I was looking at eighteen.
Sorry. Pino Dimasio.
Blame it on all Ivo. Thank you. I don't know if you have anybody speaking to this in opposition?
Through you, Mr. Chair. No registered speakers for this item.
So, Mr. Dimasio, I wonder if you might just give us a brief outline as to why you need a deferral?
Yes, we met with city staff, planning staff, last week, and we had some discussions with them, and we'd like the opportunity to continue talking with them and come to a resolution on some of their concerns before coming back.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Clay?
Yeah, so we were chatting a little bit earlier. This is a pretty significant issue with respect to flight plan or flight path. Are you... So you're going to be continuing to have discussions with staff? Are you going to go through the site plan process, or are you expecting...
We are...
This feels like a pretty important thing to come to Committee of Adjustment for.
It is. We are... This is an instance where we already have a zoning bylaw approved for the site fairly recently. There was a site plan application already in the works, and the province issued a MZO which changed the flight plan and causes some need to readjust the setback to the south. So those are the discussions we want to have with city staff on how to resolve the two conflicting zoning bylaws. And if we get to a successful resolution, we feel they will be able to support a variance for the setback. We just need to get to the right place and keep those discussions going with them. We started that last week, and we think we can get there.
Okay. Mr. Reed, did you have a question?
No. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to move a deferral so that the applicant has time to resolve issues with planning staff and also with heritage staff.
Yes. They were involved in the discussion as well, yeah. And we don't want to set a date because at this point, we don't know when those meetings will happen.
No, we would hope that you would arrive with a full endorsement from planning and heritage when you come back because I think, as my colleague was suggesting, otherwise we might really be appropriate for a full bylaw site plan review as opposed to a variance.
Through you, Mr. Chair. This is currently under site plan control, so typically we ask that it's near finalization with community planning before they come back to committee, right?
Yeah. That's definitely what we're asking.
Dimasio, I think you probably recognized that this was an item of concern to all members of the panel. It's very unusual, and I've never seen anything like this one, so I think...
It is. It is very unusual, for sure. And we... Our intention is to resolve it with staff, so...
Thank you very much. Mr. Reed, I think you got a motion?
That was my motion.
Oh, thank you.
It's to defer this so that the applicant can resolve outstanding issues with planning and heritage staff.
Thank you. We have a second.
Yeah, I'll just second that motion to defer.
I'll give it to Gary. Thank you.
Okay, absolutely. Always defer to Gary.
All those in favor?
Always defer to Gary.
Thank you. You have your deferrals, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Through you, Mr. Chair. That's all the deferrals that I see for this morning's session, so we can continue with item number one.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item number one. Item number one is three eight five Spadina Road. The committee had before it the following communication. Copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations. Two photographs of trees on the subject property received March thirty-first. Two photographs, subject property received May fifth. Copy of tree site plan received March thirty-first. Pardon me. A tree site plan prepared and received on May twenty-third. We also have staff reports from urban forestry received July the ninth. We also have community planning report received July the eleventh. We have correspondence in support from forty-six Montclair Avenue. Four letters in support signed by owners and occupants of three twenty-three Lonsdale Road, forty-four Montclair Avenue, three eighty-seven Spadina Road, forty Montclair Avenue. We also have correspondence in opposition from... Oh, this is on behalf of Spadina Village Investment Corporation. Spadina Village received July the tenth. And from three eight seven Spadina Road received July the eleventh, twenty twenty-five.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent online. No registered speakers for this item.
Thank you. Mr. Ferraro? Pardon me. Mr. Ferraro, are you online?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Let me just see if we have anybody speaking to this in opposition to...
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do not have any registered speakers for this item.
Thank you. Let me just see if any of my colleagues have any questions for you or would like a presentation.
There was some opposition letters, maybe a short presentation.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Ferraro, since there was some opposition, I wonder if you might provide us with a short presentation, please?
Absolutely. Okay, so good morning, members of the committee. My name is Daniel Ferraro, and I'm here today as the authorized agent for the property located at three eighty-five Spadina Road. I'd like to thank the committee for the opportunity to speak and present the details of our minor variance application. So the scope is the building will be converted into a restaurant, and the proposal is to construct a minor addition at the second floor and roof terrace that will be intended for outdoor dining. We are requesting relief for four variances as per the zoning examiner letter dated May thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. And so the first... The variances are from number three to number six. I'm not sure why they're numbered like that, but I'll proceed. Variance number three, the main wall abutting a residential zone must be setback three meters. So we are proposing a zero meter setback. This is to keep it consistent with the existing building and also because the width of our property is only six meters total. So if we were to comply with this three meter setback, it would reduce the addition area by half, and it would pretty much render the addition unusable for the intended purpose. It's not enough to provide what the intended purpose is for. Moving on to the next variant, the outdoor patio is permitted, provided it is at least setback forty meters from a lot in the residential zone. So in areas where multiple zones are adjacent to each other, it's difficult to comply with the distances required when they're set like side by side like it is in this situation. We are therefore requesting a zero meter setback. Joseph Messina, who is the client and owner, has gone through extended lengths to maintain open and transparent communications with the neighbors. And so all of the adjacent properties, as well as... He has... Sorry, he's made... My apologies. He has gone through extended lengths to maintain open communication and transparent communication with the neighbors in all the adjacent properties, as well as take measures to ensure that the proposal is respectful to them and to the neighborhood. Furthermore, he's taken consideration the noise and its potential impact it may have. I believe this was raised as one of the concerns from planning, and so we have discussed with them what the potential solutions could be. And so for this reason, the design of the patio ensures that the sound will be mostly projected upwards. It will be somewhat enclosed so that there's not noise propagating in every direction, especially on the residential zones. And they've also committed to limiting the audio to only two speakers, and the sound cut-off times for the patio will be from eight thirty P M during weekdays and ten P M on weekends. Now, it is important to mention that although we are adjacent to this residential lot, we are not as close as it may seem to the actual dwelling units. So for the lots on the south side of the property, we are adjacent to their lot, yes. However, we are adjacent to their rear yard, and they are pretty distant from our property to where the dwelling units are. Okay, so moving on to variance five, there is a requirement for a one-point five-meter landscape strip.
Did you just say variance number five?
I don't see any.
Yes.
We don't have a variance number five on our...
So, my apologies. So the variances are numbered on the letter from three to six. So I guess this would be variance number three.
Your variance, the one that you just mentioned, what does it read?
What is my what? Sorry?
What does it read?
I have it... I didn't copy the entire thing, but it's referring to the one-point-five-meter landscape strip provided on side yard abutting residential zone.
Okay, I believe that... Oh, that's, I think, is...
Number three.
In our agenda, we have it as item number three.
That's correct. It's because on the letter I received, the numbers one and two are only notes, so the variances are numbered differently. That's all.
I'm not sure if this... Bear with me a second. Madam Deputy Secretary, do we have... Is this an issue where there's an inconsistency between what the agent has and what we have before us?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I believe he's reading from the zoning review, which will be numbered differently than what we have in front of us. Right now, there are four variances in front of the committee. The variance that he's referring to is variance number three.
Thank you. Let me just see if my colleagues have any questions. I do have some questions as well, but I'll wait until my colleagues are done and then... So bear with me a moment. Do we have any questions for this agent at all? Mr. Clay?
Just a quick one. First of all, I love these little retail commercial areas in existing neighborhoods. They're very vibrant. They bring a lot of energy to a neighborhood. They're great. And it looks like there are a series of...
To get through, please press two.
Can you hang up on me?
No, I'm still here.
Oh, you're still there, okay.
Yeah, sorry.
And it looks like there's a whole host of commercial and restaurant-type activities, so it wouldn't be inconsistent at all. I'm just looking at the satellite photo. There's a... Looks like a really large tree in your backyard, is there?
Yeah, it's actually on the side of the property, side of the building.
So that will serve as well to screen your patio from particularly the south neighbors?
That's correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Reed?
You saw the planning conditions, I assume, and you're okay with those?
Yes, so we've discussed those with planning staff, and they've actually discussed it directly with the owner, Joseph Messina, and he seems to be okay with them as well.
Okay, great. So I'm a little concerned... I mean, I agree with Larry. This seems like a really great addition to the commercial space. I am a little concerned about the plan for amplified music. You're planning to have speakers on the patio, is that correct?
However, the speakers are intended for loud music playing. It's just for ambiance, sort of sound for the people who are intended to dine on the roof terrace. This is not intended to be like a very loud restaurant type of environment. It's more of a family and a Sunday or like weekday lunch kind of... Lunch and dinner kind of place. So the intention is not to have very loud audio.
Yeah, but I mean, I think, I guess the problem is that if we just say, you know, it's okay, then... it's okay, then someone, you know, someone could take up and play loud music. Would you be okay if we just said that there couldn't be amplified music on that patio? That's a standard condition in these kinds of situations.
If you wish to add it as a condition, please do so, and then if there's any opposition from the client, then we will deal with it at a later date, since it's something that you wish to add.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I had a similar question, concern actually, is that because directly behind the subject property, you've got 323 Lonsdale, which I believe is a low-rise apartment building, and there are, it looks like there are windows of tenants that will overlook your property, and I had the same concern because you, people leave windows open, and if you have amplified sound, that can become a problem. And just saying that it'll be low-level sound, I think, is not adequate. Somebody may come up and crank up the music, so I'd be quite happy to see a restriction on amplified sound. But thank you so much, Mr. Ferraro. Let me just see if there's anybody else that has any comment? No? Okay, so we'll take it into committee and render a decision. Colleagues, anybody has any comments? No further questions, I take it, but any comments? Mr. Reed?
If there's no other comments, I'm happy to make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Reed.
So, I'd make a motion to approve this variant. As was stated, I think it contributes to the ambiance of this commercial strip. But with the, with the condition, and I think the variances are, you know, minor and also appropriate for the particular location where, you know, there's not really any scope for that kind of, the kind of spaces that the zoning is asking for. But I would like it to, it needs to be with conditions, forestry condition number two, the planning condition, and also a condition that there be no amplified music on the patio.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Do we have a second?
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair. I'm just looking at the community planning conditions. There's two. And I'll ask the presenter to present that on the screen. And it's privacy screening in accordance with what's been shown on the plans. And then, condition number two says, "The listed plans and drawings in condition number one be revised to include raised planters." Those revised plans will not be before us today. So, staff will reword that condition.
Okay.
Okay, so just be mindful about that.
Sure. Sounds good.
Thank you very much. Sorry, I was...
I was seconding. I'm sorry, I'm trying to be Gary. He's so fast on this.
I went right past you, and I saw Mr. Reed.
Oh.
Can we just all second?
We're almost wearing matching shirts today, so...
So, we have Mr. Dylan Reed moving the motion, Mr. Peter Reed seconding the motion. All those in favor? Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Ferraro. You have your approval without condition.
Thank you very much, everyone to the panel. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item number two. Item number two is 53 Burt Mount Avenue. Committee had before it the following communication. Copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations. Pardon me. Five photographs of trees on the subject property received May the 1st. And we have a three signature petition in support, signed by owners and occupants of properties on Burt Mount Avenue, received July the 14th.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent online. No registered speakers for this item.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dunlop, are you there?
Morning.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning. Name and address, please?
Yeah, Ryan Dunlop, 600 Fleet Street, Toronto.
Thank you very much. I think this is a very complex application, where there looks, one very difficult variance that you're requesting. I don't think we have any request for presentation, but let me just ask my colleagues if they have any questions over here. No, none? Yeah, this is a very straightforward application and a very minor request. Since we don't have any questions for you, is there anything you want to add before, take it into committee?
Nope. I think that's pretty, pretty straightforward, as you say.
Thank you very much. We'll take it into committee, and I'll look for a motion. Mr. Reed?
Thanks, Chair. There's just the one variance, and it's just FSI. The addition to the house is sitting on top of the existing footprint, and it's a common addition in this neighborhood, and I can see no negative impact from it, so I move approval without condition.
Thank you very much. Do we have a second? Mr. McKay, thank you very much. All those in favor? Thank you. Mr. Dunlop, you have your approval.
Perfect. Have a great day.
Thank you. You too. Thank you very much. And now we move on to item number three. And when I saw the address, I was wondering if there's a spelling error. Somebody dropped the E. Anyway, this is number 14 Blong Avenue. The committee had before it the following communication. Copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations. Four photographs of the subject property received May 28th. Tree site plan received May 29th, 2025.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent online. No registered speakers for this item.
Thank you. Is this Michael Shirzakhtar? Michael, are you there? Agent missing.
Through the chair, we're just having issues unmuting the speaker.
Okay, thank you. We can roll. Hi, is this Michael?
Yes, Mr. Chair. My name is Michael. Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is...
I don't believe we have anybody in opposition, so it may not require a presentation. Let me see if my colleagues require either presentation or have any questions for you. None at all. Yeah, this, this application is very straightforward. Again, it's just FSI, a single variance. Since there aren't any questions or requests for presentation, let me take it into committee and see if we can expedite. So, colleagues, look for a motion to approve. This is a very straightforward request for increased FSI. Mr. McKay?
All right, Chair, yes, I would move then that we approve this minor variance application. I see no conditions.
Correct. Thank you. Do we have a second? Mr. Reed, thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. You have your approval, sir. Thank you. Moving on to item number four, 17 Alice Gardens. The committee had before it the following communication. Copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations. Arborist report and tree protection plan prepared and, prepared by Circ Developments received April 25th. Staff report from Tree Prote-, Urban Forestry received July the 9th, and staff report from Metrolinks received July the 9th. We have correspondence in opposition from 22 Co-Hill Drive, and we also have opposition from the Swansea Area Rate Base Association, received July 14th, 2025.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent online. No registered speakers for this item.
Thank you. Is this Robert, are you there? Or Robert McCatchy, McCatchy? Robert McCatchy, are you there? Can you hear us?
Yeah, hi.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
Hi. I don't, we don't have anybody in opposition, but just let me see if my colleagues have either questions for you or require a presentation.
Sure.
Mr. Clay?
Thanks, Chair. So, you're seeking a height variance, 1.2 meters beyond what the bylaw requires, and I appreciate that you've got setbacks on the third story, which is good. Two questions. One, there looks like there are tall buildings adjacent to your property. Do you happen to know how, they're peaked, but do you happen to know how tall those are or how tall your proposal is relative to those, those houses?
There is some supplementary information. It's just Google Maps, street view images, and the cover of our drawings, we've modeled the neighbors as best as we can and our building based on kind of measuring bricks, and it's our best guess. We didn't do a survey to check the height of them, but...
Then, so you are, so what is the height of your first and second and third floor? The ceiling, floor to ceiling height?
Let me check my section. Nine feet? Nine, nine and nine.
So, nine-foot ceiling, okay.
Fourth, nine feet higher.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions for the applicant? Any concerns? No? Okay, then, in that case, let's take it into committee, and I'll look for a motion.
I'm happy to make a motion unless there's some comments or, no, okay. So, I think the key things for me in this are that it's built on the existing footprint, which I think is really appreciated, and also that that third floor is set back, you know, to create less, less of a massing impact. So, given those, given those elements, I think that this is supportable. Apart from the height, the rest of the variances are pretty minor. So, I move that we support this with four through condition number three and with the Metrolinks warning clause.
Thank you. Do we have a second? All those in favor? Thank you. You have your approval, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Yeah, Swansea Area Rate Base Association opposed it.
He's not here.
Yeah, he's missed a couple recently, so...
He's slipping. Okay.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We can probably deal with items number five and six together.
1174 and 1172. Thank you. I just apologize, must apologize, I've been remiss in not reading out the purpose of the applications. Okay, moving on to items number five and six, which we will deal with together. Item number five is 1174 Devonport Road, and item number six is 1172 Devonport Road. Purpose of the application, to alter the existing three-story semi-detached dwelling containing two residential dwelling units by constructing front and rear third-story additions, a rear second-story balcony with an exit staircase, and a new third-story balcony. The existing rear third-story balcony will be demolished. I believe, I believe the purpose is exactly the same for both items. The committee had before it, copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, a covering letter from the agent received June the 5th, correspondence from the zoning examiner received May the 15th, and arborist report received May the 1st, and I believe the same documentation was received for item number six.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent online. No registered speakers, and it's the same agent.
Mr. Smith, are you there?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Jay Smith, agent for the applications. My address is 2814 Hollington Crescent in Mississauga.
Thank you very much. That's perfect. Let me just see if my colleagues have any need for a presentation, because we don't have anybody in opposition, or if they have any concerns. None, not at all. I don't see any need for a presentation, or do we have any questions for you? I think it's fairly straightforward. Two variances that are requested, and both are quite minor. Take it into committee, and I'll look for a motion. Mr. Reed, thank you.
Thanks, Chair. These are almost technical variances. I think they're, they're very small distances in terms of the side yard, and I think permitting these balconies will, will result in better units and with little impact. So, I'm happy to move approval of both of the, both of the applications without condition.
Thank you very much. Do we have a second? Mr. McKay, thank you. Seconds. Mr. Smith, you have your...
All in favor?
I beg your pardon. All those in favor? Thank you. You have your approval, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Item number seven. Okay, moving on to item seven. Item seven is 50 Westbrook Avenue. Purpose of the application is to construct a new three-story detached dwelling, a fourplex, with front and rear second-story balconies and front and rear porches with stairs. The second and third stories will be cantilevered on the east side of the building. There will be a total of four residential dwelling units on this lot. We have a total of six, six, initially six variances requested, but this is a, there's a revision on this one, so there's an amendment to, I think it's variance number two. Okay. I'll just read the rest of this into record. 50 Westbrook Avenue. Committee had before it the following communication. Copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations. Covering letter from the agent received June the 5th, 2025. A decision number affecting the subject property. Arborist report received May 6th. Presentation materials received June, July the 9th. Redline public notice received July 11th. Revised site plan, floor plans and elevations received July 11th. Revised zoning waiver received July 11th, and a covering letter received July 11th. We do have correspondence in opposition from 43 Westbrook, 44 Westbrook, 52 Westbrook, 48 Westbrook, and, well, two from 48 Westbrook. We also have correspondence in opposition from 207 Westlake, received July the 9th. One item received, no dress provided, received July the 10th, and one from 59 Crew Avenue received July the 11th, 2025.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent online. We also have four registered speakers in opposition.
Thank you. Registered speaker, the agent here by any chance? Oh, I saw somebody standing up. No? Okay.
No, we have the agent online.
Online.
Yeah, Jonathan Benskowsky, 301 Kiwattan Avenue.
Hi, Mr. Benskowsky.
Good morning, committee.
Thank you. We will need, we'll require a presentation, as we do have folks in opposition.
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. As you did previously mention, there is one further revision. It is the elimination of variance number two, which is the height of all of the exterior is the elimination of variance number two, which is the height of all of the exterior main walls.
Okay.
So those have now been zoning bylaw compliant, as the third floor has now been set in from the floor below it. So in terms of the height and the massing, as it addresses the street itself, it is compliant with the zoning bylaw. If we could bring up my, my presentation material, and just go to page two, please. This was a previous application that was refused. I believe some of the members here today were on that panel also. We've made some substantial changes to the application itself. Essentially, we have now removed the overall dwelling height from the previous application, as well as with the change today, the main wall height has also been removed. The other, the other significant reductions have to do with the building length. We have reduced the building length by 1.22 meters, going from the original proposal of eighteen nine, eighteen point nine seven to seventeen meters. We have reduced the coverage by 3.27 percent. We have removed the canopy encroachment as well as the front yard landscaping request, and we have increased the front yard landscaping for the soft landscaping by 3.9 percent. What we have added, and this is a result of pushing the building forward, and I'll get into that in a couple of minutes, is essentially a front porch encroachment into the required front yard setback, and what that triggers also is an exterior stair encroachment and a front balcony encroachment. This is essentially the situation of all of the houses on this street because of the front yard setbacks that exist today. If we could go to the next page, please, and zoom in on the top left, which would be the survey. So what we see here is the existing dwelling is actually set considerably back from the existing dwellings to the east and the west. So if we look here, we can also see on the adjacent house at 48, again, a stair which is very similar to what we're proposing, which essentially comes to the front property line. There are very, very small front yard setbacks of these dwellings, basically 1.28 to the west and 1.08 meters to the east. Those are the existing setbacks of those two dwellings. I also want to note the existing side yard setback of the dwelling to the west, which is point four meters, and the existing side yard setback of the dwelling at the house today, which is at point two two meters. If we could just zoom out now and go to the photograph on the right, you'll see here, again, what I spoke of with the dwellings essentially having very minimal front yard setbacks with stairs that essentially touch the property line, and it's a little bit better kind of conveyed on the map at the bottom of the screen. So if we look at that map again, you're going to see the dwellings that are pushed extremely close to the property line at the front, again, which triggers those stair encroachment, which basically exists on every dwelling. If we could go to the next page, please, we could just zoom in on the property itself. So again, I spoke of the minimal front yard setback, but what that does translate to is a large boulevard at 6.22 meters, or 20 feet five. So again, the stairs, as you can see here, are proposed essentially adjacent to the property line, being perpendicular to it. Again, that triggers those encroachment variances. What's interesting about the existing house, and we can see it through the dotted line here, is that the existing house is actually pushed further back than what we are proposing for our rear wall. And now remember, the third floor is now compliant with the main wall height, and the overall height of the dwelling is compliant itself. So essentially, the one built form variance we're going for that would create any impact is the building length, which is point seven five meters over the zoning bylaw requirement of seventeen meters. So the house has been pushed forward, again, as per the application before you today, from where the existing rear main wall is, quite significantly, somewhere in the neighborhood of around three meters, the dwelling will be actually be pushed forward towards the other dwellings. Now, if we go to the next page, the, these photos really aren't as important anymore because we have now eliminated the, the side main wall heights, but I did want to show some of the side main wall heights for, for three-story dwellings, or, you know, two stories with the garage dwellings on this street. But again, that's more of a moot point now, as we have now eliminated that. The rear yard soft landscaping variance is triggered by parking in the rear. You know, it's, it's a little bit of a struggle between these multiplexes where, you know, you're not required to provide parking, but everybody wants to provide parking, so we're bringing it into the rear yard, again, with landscaped areas around it to control any type of stormwater runoff, and that would obviously be handled through a grading plan. I see my time is up. That's it, committee.
Thank you very much. Let me just see if there are any questions that committee members may have at the moment? No, don't see any. All right, we'll move on to folks who may have, who are here in opposition.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We'll hear from the one opposition that's here in person, and then we'll go to those that are online. So the owner at 48 Westbrook Avenue?
Good morning. I wonder if you could have your name and address, please?
My name is Kato Freel, and I'm the owner of 48 Westbrook Avenue.
Thank you. You have five minutes.
Thank you. So I'm the owner of the property adjacent to 50 Westbrook Avenue on the west side of the property. I live there with my partner Ross McKay and my mother Mary No Freel, who have both written letters of objection for the proposed development and are here today. We have three main areas of concern with this application I'd like to address, and these variances were all major concern to the neighborhood and committee during the first meeting of February 2025, that have not been adequately revised and amended in the proposal before us. Our first concern is regarding the soft land removal and paving or coverage of the lot. There are four separate bylaws of soft land coverage being drastically reduced, and they include the maximum permitted lot coverage of 35 percent increased to 47.75 percent, the front yard soft landscaping requirement minimum of 75 percent reduced to 63.63 percent, the minimum 50 percent of rear yard soft landscaping reduced to just 31.02 percent, and exterior's front yard setback no closer than 0.6 meters to the lot line, and the proposed exterior stairs only 0.1 meters from the lot line, which is a 600 percent increase and only 10 centimeters. In the face of increasing climate change impacts, the removal of soft landscaping and mature trees raises serious flood risks of our home, neighbors, and the city's drainage system. Ponding is already an issue in East York, and this will make it worse. The removal of mature trees located on the property lines are very tall, with extensive root networks under the home, intertwined with our water and sewage pipes, as well as the foundation of our property. Furthermore, in the February meeting, the resident of 63 Crew, the house directly beside, sorry, behind 50 Westbrook, noted the property adjacent removed a tree resulting in a large sinkhole in the backyard, meaning neither neighbors could use their backyard safely. This is a major concern, given the proximity of the trees in question and the closeness to our home. What assurances these trees will be removed appropriately that won't impact the infrastructure other homes rely on? The trees did have a simple visual assessment done in the dead of winter, with the trees covered in snow, simply noting a broken branch identifying poor health. We'd request, given the sheer potential of risk, that an in-depth assessment is done, where they're boring into the trees to test their true health, because if you look at it visually now, they're flourishing. Furthermore, these variances around lot coverage and soft landscaping are significantly individual, as well as grossly negligent when looking at the building plan in a holistic point of view. The second concern is the proposed closeness the apartment building would be to our home. The bylaw states that the minimum required side lot setback is 0.9 meters, and the new dwelling is proposed to sit 0.46 meters from the west side lot line, which is reduced by nearly 50 percent. Our house is over 100 years old and sits on the shared property line. With the proposed three-story building and full basement, the depth of the foundation required for the structure of this size is very deep and could compromise the integrity of our foundation, given its narrow distance. Being proposed so close to the property line in our physical home, there'd also likely not be enough room for maintenance with either property in the future. Our final concern is the lack of community consultation. This was a large speaking point in the meeting of February 2025, with the chair stating he could not approve a proposed development of such size and change in the neighborhood characteristic without talking to the neighbors first. We purchased and moved into the home in spring of 2025. In that time, our only interaction with the owners was when I introduced myself, and they were placing a for lease sign on their property, asking if we knew anyone who'd like to rent the home. He mentioned very casually that he may do improvements in the future, and that was the entire extent of the conversation. Absolutely no mention of a proposed three-story, four-unit...
Please text me, and I will get back to you as soon as I can. Have a good day.
There is no mention of a proposed three-story, four-unit, and overall 10-bedroom multiplex. That's very significant. And since the application's rejection nearly six months ago, it's concerning that the owners and agents have ignored the committee's recommendation to speak with the community. It's especially concerning when the property, if approved, the owners would increase the community by 10 to 15 additional residents, and it does not establish a good relationship for the neighborhood and could hinder the success of the integration of this multiplex into the community. Once again, demonstrating this development is not in the neighborhood's best interest, given the size of the lot. In conclusion, the variances I've discussed are all major variance requests, not minor, and the proposal is not desirable or appropriate for the development of the land, given the volume of variance requests and the extent that each variance has been requested to change. It's currently asking too much of the lot, and we are not against development of homes in multiplexes in the city of Toronto, and I would ask the owners to consider a single-family home or duplex for the size of this lot. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Here with us is to see if there are any questions for you from committee members. Any questions, folks? None? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Are there anybody here in person that wishes to speak on this item? No? Okay. So we will now hear from the owner at 39 Westbrook Avenue, and they are online.
Good morning. Is this Sylvia Pivko?
Sorry, I had to unmute. Yes, Sylvia Pivko at 39 Westbrook.
Thank you very much. I wonder if you could give us your presentation. You've got five minutes.
Okay. So thank you for this opportunity. You are all experts in various related aspects of planning, obviously. However, ordinary citizens like myself are at a disadvantage, really, as no, we have no expert knowledge of architecture and construction. So my comments are personal reflections. As the speaker before me, you did unanimously decline the request last time for a number of reasons, and as an individual on the street, I just don't see enough changes to meet all those previous reasons. So they, it seems like some of the changes that are, have been made are more cosmetic, but essentially the same massive building on a such little plot. I noted that they did remove the double garage and have parking spots in the back. They got rid of that third-floor balcony and the windows. Otherwise, notwithstanding the recent changes that I didn't know about until I just heard about them now, it's still a three-story above ground, and I do support a lot of what the previous speaker spoke about. I am requesting that the individual making this construction really look at reducing their footprint, reduce it down to possibly two stories. As the previous speaker noted, there's been no consultation with the neighbors. I am worried about the parking. Already, neighbors are having to park on other streets. There's no room on the street left, and with four apartments, you could look at four to eight cars. It's going to be a terrible dynamic for the street when people are fighting for spots. It's not conducive to good neighbor relations. And it does seem very close to 48 Westbrook, as it was mentioned. So at the end of the day, I am not opposed to building in the city and the new zoning, and looking at expanding housing, we need it, but this is such a little plot. To go three stories up, have four apartments, it just feels overwhelming, and I just don't see, I just don't see how it's going to be a good thing for our street. And if the owners could look at true amendments, and the houses they pointed across the street, they're all single dwellings. Yes, they might be big and tall, but they're single dwellings, having four apartments. I don't even know, I can't even tell really how big those apartments are and how people will live in them. They feel very small. Anyway, I'm very, very opposed to this, and I'm hoping the committee at least will have some conditions or consider asking them to reduce the units. Thanks very much.
Thank you very kindly. Let me just see if my colleagues, any of the colleagues have any questions for you? No, seeing none. Thank you very much.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We'll now hear from the owner at 40 Westbrook Avenue.
Please record your message. When you have finished recording, you may hang up.
I'm sorry, I missed part of that. Was that...
Is that Joanna? So she's not there?
Joanne Pudd?
Is this Joanna?
Through the chair. We're still trying to unmute the speaker.
Thank you.
Sorry, I just heard from Joanne. She's meeting, needed at work, so she had to get off the line, unfortunately.
Okay, so through you, Mr. Chair. Then we'll move on to Lynn Lynch.
Thank you.
She's not online either? Okay. Through you, Mr. Chair. We did have Lynn Lynch registered in concern. They're not online either, so we'll go back to the agent.
Thank you. Mr. Benskowsky? Mr. Benskowsky?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I was trying to unmute myself.
No, no problem. You've heard the folks in opposition and their concerns. I wonder if you might please address them?
Yeah, absolutely. If we can go to the public notice first. I just wanted to address the reduction of, of one of the points brought up was the front yard soft landscaping. If we look here, what's required is 2.31 square meters. We're at 1.96 square meters. Again, that's largely driven by really the, the reduced front yard setback that exists on this property as well as the adjacent properties. I also wanted to address the side yard setback. If we could, again, go back to my presentation material, or to just bring up the site plan itself. The actual proposed dwelling will be further away from the adjacent property at 48 than what exists there. If we, yeah, maybe just go to, yeah, the site plan, perfect. If we could just zoom in on that west setback. So the proposed side yard setback is actually being increased from what is there today on the property. Again, in terms of maintenance, really no different than, than what the first individual who spoke of who lives there has. They'll have to come to some type of an agreement of how maintenance would work. I mean, this is a typical setback, as we see, that exists on this street. So we see the existing side yard setback of this property already being reduced below the zoning bylaw, with the adjacent property also being below the zoning bylaw. And if we continue on down to the overhead map, sorry, if we go back to the overhead map, which I believe is on page two, yes, if we zoom in there, just on the overhead map there, yeah, that's perfect, the bottom, we can see that this is a tight, you know, this is a tight urban neighborhood. Side yard setbacks are reduced. We can see that from this right here, what exists on the ground itself. I also did want to address the stairs being close to the property line. As pointed out, it's exactly the situation of the adjacent neighbor who, who had spoken previously with where the front stairs were located. I, I just want to go, go back and stress, the massing of the building is zoning bylaw compliant in terms of main wall height as well as overall height. So the three-story built form that we're proposing complies with the zoning bylaw. Essentially, the built form variance request is for the increase of point seven five meters in building length. But again, as that would relate to the third floor being set in 1.3 meters, again, that building length for the third floor and that impact as it would be to the adjacent neighbor to the west, which is closer, would be actually less than the 17.75 because of the 1.3-meter reduction. So it's actually set in 1.3 meters, which would only help with, with any type of impact from the building itself. There has been drastic changes. I reviewed them initially. I, I, I was under the impression the, the owner had spoken with the neighbors, and, and that's essentially it, committee. I, I believe it's an improved proposal, again, with just really the point seven five meter increase in building length.
Thank you, Mr. Benskowsky. Let me just see if my colleagues have any concerns or questions for you. Mr. Reed?
Yeah, so in the rear yard, you know, is that you're asking for fairly considerable variance in soft landscaping. Would you be okay if we put a condition that in the rear yard, the paving had to be done with permeable pavement? with permeable pavers?
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
Again, as I mentioned, you know, through you, Mr. Chair, Mr. D. Reed, it's really tough because they speak about a lack of parking and a concern of that, and, you know, it's kind of a chicken and an egg. Where do we put the parking to satisfy the neighborhood as well as this? And really, it's into the rear yard. As the neighbor did speak of, we originally did have a two-car garage, which was not received well by both the committee and the neighborhood itself. So, you know, the alternative was to put the parking in the rear yard, because, again, we really have no front yard setback on the property itself.
And just to confirm, right, so, the actual zoning bylaw for multiplexes doesn't require any parking, so the parking that you're providing is voluntary, right?
Correct.
Okay. And so, also, at the rear balcony, would you be okay if we have a condition requiring privacy screens?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Absolutely, Mr. D. Reed.
Okay, thank you.
Dylan, when you talk about the backyard landscaping, you're talking about the driveway and the parking pads?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Jonathan, did you hear that? It's the driveway and the parking pads?
Absolutely. We have no issue with that.
Okay.
Any other questions? None? Thank you, Mr. Benkovsky. I think you've addressed some of the concerns that I had as well, particularly Mr. Reed raised with regard to rear yards landscaping and then the permeability of driveways. Let me take it into committee, and we'll see what the outcome is. So, colleagues, any discussion before we move into look for a motion? Mr. Reed?
Sure, thanks, Chair. I do have concerns with this application. I recall it last time, and I do appreciate that there has been some change, but I think that the changes are relatively minimal. My main concerns are the coverage and the rear yard soft landscaping. I think the coverage is a, is a significant increase over, over what's permitted. I do appreciate the fact that, I know a lot of the neighbors were concerned about the number of units, but that's, that's something that's permitted, and that's a desirable thing to allow more different types of residences throughout the city. So, I don't have issue with that at all, but it's just more the coverage and the soft landscaping, so I don't think I can support it again.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Any other comments, observations? Mr. Reed?
Yeah, so, I wasn't at the previous one. I was not at the previous one, but to me, it seems like they've addressed, they've significantly improved the proposal. In terms of lot coverage, I mean, even if it was by law compliant in terms of length, it would still be over the lot coverage, right? So, I think that the lot coverage difference between what would be allowed in terms of the length and the small additional length being asked, I don't think is that significant. It's just, it's a, it's a small lot. I do feel like this is very much what the kind of multiplex that the zoning is looking for. I feel like they, they've done some creative things. I actually very much appreciate the removal of variance number two. I think that was really important. That was one of the things that was concerning to me. I think that that reduces the massing impact on the, on the street considerably. I think that the driveway with the, with the cantilever is actually a very creative way of, you know, creating more space for the thing. And I do point out that, in fact, it is increasing the side yard setback with the, with the, with the building to the west, so it's actually improving that, although, of course, it is a larger building, so the impact will be, still be noticeable. So, to me, this is in line with the intention of the zoning. I think that most of the variances are actually fairly minor, given the intent of the multiplex bylaws. I do appreciate that they're providing some parking on the street. I do point out that it's not that far from main station and other, other transit, so it's not necessarily the case that everyone will be using a car. And I appreciate that, I think that the, you know, that there's a, there's a push and pull between the rear yard landscaping and providing parking, and I think clearly the neighborhood is concerned about parking, and I think it's a good thing that they're providing a couple of spaces, and I think that adding the permeable pavers will help address that issue. So, to me, this is supportable.
Thank you.
Thanks. I do recall this one. I think I'll just start off by saying, one of the major points of contention last time was the fact that there was no consultation with adjoining neighborhood, adjacent neighbors. And that, you know, when, when we bring multiplexes into the city, I think it's really incumbent on agents and owners to have discussions. I frankly, not sure that you'd be able to resolve all those outstanding issues, but at the same time, I think there is a need for and a responsibility to have those discussions. So, Mr. Benkovsky, you mentioned that you thought your agent or your owner was supposed to, I would suggest that you're a bit of a frequent flyer here. I would suggest that going forward, that you insist that your client have those discussions or in the absence of those, that you undertake those yourself, because I think it's really critical. Multiplexes are going to be successful in this city, we have to have discussions with neighbors, and neighbors have to feel like they've been consulted and engaged in the process. They may not agree with everything, but I think that's critical. Having said that, there have been some significant changes to this application, you know, as Dylan's pointed out, all the ones that I think are relevant, so I won't go over those again. The addition of permeable pavers in the background, in the backyard, I think will go a long way to address the city's concerns about water permeability. You know, for all intents purposes, this is pretty darn close to as of right for a multiplex, so it is tough when you have a neighborhood which is largely, or a number of one-story bungalows. It does look out of place to a certain extent, but at the same time, these neighbors, as the agent pointed out, this neighborhood's going through transition. There are a number of taller two-and-a-half-story dwellings on the street, so it's, I don't think it would be inconsistent with the increasingly prevailing building form. So, for those reasons, and I do, I was involved in this one before, I think this is an improved process or improved application, which is actually what the process is designed to do, you know, is that when you get a refusal, you, if you want to proceed, you've got to go back and make changes to accommodate those concerns, and I think in this case, that's happened.
Mr. Reed, any observations?
Nothing to add, really. A bit on the fence on this one. I'm just glad you, it's been good to hear from the other members.
Thank you. For my part, I think that there were some concerns, particularly with the rear yard soft landscaping, and of course, the item of variance number four, which is the lot coverage, but I think Mr. Dylan Reed has just made a good observation that the length of the building is only .75 over what is required, and that increase accounts for some of the issue with variance number four and the lot coverage, so we're almost, as Mr. Clay's also pointed out, almost as of right, pretty close to it. But I also think Mr. Clay's point about consultation is absolutely critical. If we don't communicate our intentions, they'll be misread and misunderstood. We need to clarify and engage. So, I find this application as amended, supportable. So, perhaps I'll take it into committee and ask for...
Yeah, I'm happy to move a motion. I move that we approve these variances for the reasons I've mentioned and my colleagues have mentioned, with the condition that the rear yard driveway and parking plots be paved with permeable pavers and that privacy screens be installed on the east and west side and the rear balcony.
Thank you. And it's amended.
And, yeah, approved as amended.
Do you have a second, Mr. Clay? Seconds. All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Reed. Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Benkovsky, it's approved.
... Please record your message. When you have finished recording, you may hang up.
Thank you. Moving on to... Item number eight was deferred. Item number nine also deferred. We'll move on to...
Can you hear me well?
Hold on, please.
Not quite ready yet. Sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Bear with me. So, item number 10. Item number 10 is 99 Langley Avenue. The purpose of the application is to alter the existing two-and-one-half-story detached dwelling by constructing a third-story addition and a rear third-story balcony, a Juliet balcony. The committee had before it the following communication: Copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations; seven photographs of treason and the subject property received May 27. We have letters in support, three formal letters in support from owners of 92, owners occupants of 92, 97, and 103 Langley Avenue received May the 8th, and correspondence in support from 91 Riverdale Avenue received June the 20th. Okay.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent online, and we also have one registered speaker. No, they're not online anymore. Okay. So, we did have one registered speaker in concern from 101 Langley Avenue. They're no longer online.
Thank you. Thank you. Is this Kinga Jakubowska?
Yes. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and committee members.
Could we have just your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Kinga Jakubowska, and I'm representing owners of the property located at 99 Langley Avenue.
Thank you very much. Let me just see if we require a presentation. This is a fairly straightforward application. We've got three variances before us. So, let me just see. Nope. Any, nope. Any questions? None either. Okay. It's a good day. We don't have any questions, no need for presentation, so we'll take it into committee and look for a decision. This is a fairly straightforward application. There are three variances. They look all fairly minor, so I don't see any issues with it. Anybody ready for, oh, thank you, Mr. Reed.
Sure, thanks, Chair. I agree. I think this is a very minor application, and the third story is within the existing footprint, and the, the variances that come out of that are extremely small. There's a half-meter height, and an FSI is just, I think, a regular occurrence in this neighborhood when, when you have redevelopments, and these variances won't result in negative impacts to the neighbors, so I move approval without condition.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reed. Do we have a second now? Mr. McKay, thank you so kindly. Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. Unanimous. You have your approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you, you too.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I think we need to move on to item number 12, because we can't seem to find the agent for item number 11 just yet.
Okay, thank you. So, we'll move on to item number 12. Item number 12 is... Item number 12 is 163 St. Clarence Avenue. The purpose of, pardon me, the purpose of this application is to construct a new three-story detached dwelling, a fourplex, with a front ground-floor landing with stairs, a side-north ground-floor walkout, two rear ground-floor landings with stairs, and two third-floor side-north terraces, unit A and unit C. Also, to construct a new two-story laneway suite in the rear yard with a front west second-floor terrace. There will be a total of five dwellings on the lot, four units within the main dwelling, and one unit within the laneway suite. The existing rear detached garage will be demolished. Committee had before it copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. Revised site plan, floor plans, and elevations received June the 8th. Four photographs of the subject property received May the 27th. Covering letter from the agent received June the 8th. Presentation materials from the agent received June the 8th. Email correspondence from the agent received July the 10th. We also have staff reports from Urban Forestry received July the 9th. We also have advisory notice from staff at Metro Links received July the 9th. And we have correspondence in concern from 147 St. Clarence Avenue and from 141 St. Clarence Avenue received July the 9th, July the 4th, and July the 9th, respectively.
Through you, Mr. Chair. At this time, we're going to unmute the owner who is online and just ask them if they're going to be speaking for their application, because we can't track down their agent.
Thank you. Mr. Eklar?
Good morning. Justin Eklar, are you there?
Yes, good morning, Chair.
Good morning.
Good morning, members of committee.
I don't, I don't know if you heard, but we haven't been able to get a hold of your agent, so will you be speaking?
Yes, that's okay. The intent was for me to speak this morning.
Oh, okay, great, thank you. So, if you could just have for the record your name and address, please?
Sure. My name is Justin Eklar. We're the company that owns 163 St. Clarence. Our address is 80 Carlton Street in Toronto.
Thank you. We do have folks in who have expressed concern, but let me just see if we have anybody here to speak to this. Do we have anybody to speak at all?
Through you, Mr. Chair, no.
No? Okay. Let me see if my colleagues need a presentation or they have questions for you. Any questions? Presentation? No? No? This, you've got five, five variances requested. Mr. Reed?
Yeah, actually, a question. Just, I believe you're, in the, in the renderings, you've put a tree in that, sort of, the one place where you're, you're doing a bit of a step back from the sidewalk, right?
Yes, we are.
Would you be okay if we made a condition that you plant a tree there?
I think we'd have no problem with that.
Okay, great, thanks. Just because, you know, it's a tight lot, and obviously, I can see why you're, you're close to the lot line, but it, that would help create, I think, a bit more of a open feeling in the sidewalk, so, thanks a lot.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. McKay?
Yes, thanks. Just with respect to the laneway suite, you're proposing two stories, and I'm wondering why, like, why not one story for that additional unit?
Yes, the intent really is to create two-bedroom family-type units on the laneway suite and the, the as-proposed fourplex. So, you know, we don't feel that parking is necessary, so there was no intent to create a garage and then a suite above, and we look to the opportunity to create that family housing by maximizing with a two-story, two-bedroom suite there.
Okay, thanks for that.
Thank you. Any other questions? No? Okay. Yeah, I think for my part, I was just also concerned about the rear yard landscaping, which, am I looking at the right one?
The variance number...
Variance number three, I believe. Could you just speak to that for a moment?
Yeah, we've, we've looked at that, because there was a letter of concern from 147, I believe, or 149. You know, really, it's a, it's pretty minor in nature. We're going from 85% required to 76% required, and really, the, everywhere where we don't require a walkway or steps up to units has been soft landscaping, save and except for, you'll notice a small patio off of the walkway that's meant to provide some outdoor living space for one of the ground-floor units at the east face. So, that, that really is the crux of where that variance comes from, and so our intent is to use permeable paver, light-colored, of course, and create some outdoor living space for that unit, I believe it's unit D.
Good. Thank you. And even though we have a two-story laneway suite, it's essentially one residential unit. It's quite spacious. Thank you. Mr. McKay?
If I just have a further question, what's, what's the frontage of the lot? It seemed quite narrow to me. Could you say what that is in meters or feet, frontage?
Yes. It's, it's, as I recall, 26 feet. I'm just looking at the survey for meters. I'm just looking at the survey for meters.
Okay. That was a far...
About 26 feet.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I... When I was looking at your presentation materials and the location of this particular site, I think it's a very interesting location, and it's a location where this structure will work quite well. So, let me see if any other question... Ms. Reed has a question for you.
Thank you, Chair. To the owner, you mentioned permeable pavers. Would that be for all of the areas marked "walkway" in the rear yard?
You know, I'd have to look at that. I don't see why it couldn't be. I was merely just addressing that variance of 9% from 85 to 76. I'd have to talk to our architect and kind of iron out that, but I don't see why not.
Okay. Would you be okay if we put a condition that the walkways be constructed with permeable pavers in the rear?
Yes, I'd be fine with that.
Okay. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Reed. Okay. Any other questions? Comments? No? We'll take it into committee now and look for a decision. Thank you. Mr. Clay?
Thanks, Chair. All good questions. I think this is a really good proposal. I particularly like the additional density on College Street, which is also walk to Dundas Street, which both have very frequent streetcar service. It's a good location for additional density, particularly given it's a corner lot. I thought the design was really quite creative, and the variances before us are overall really quite minor, particularly on the soft landscaping. If the agent is willing to do permeable pavers, I think that adds... Just looking at the site plan, there is soft landscaping around the laneway suite, which, quite frankly, we sometimes don't often see, and I think that's a real bonus. And similarly, the separation distance between the laneway suite and the main dwelling also seems to contain a great deal of soft landscaping, which is similar, and I think is a really commendable attribute to this application. So, I think it's a very good proposal, and I think it's portable.
Thank you. Ms. Reed?
I just want to... I agree with my colleague. Also, I think, I mean, the laneway house basically presents as another house on the street, so, you know, it really fits very nicely into the area. It's a bit of a tight lot, too, so I think that's sort of understandable why it's pushing close to the sidewalk. The presentation on the sidewalk isn't that friendly, as one of the people of concern noted, but I think adding that tree in that space will help, and having that little indentation does open up the space a little bit. And, I mean, given the tight lot, I don't think there is really any other options. So... And yeah, as my colleague said, it's entirely what you would expect on a main street like College, so I think it's very supportable as well.
Thank you. For my part, I think it's a really interesting design, facing College Street. It's often very bland. Look for a motion on this particular item.
Chair, I'm happy to move a motion on this one. I think for the reasons we've all stated, this is a supportable application. Move approval. Subject to forestry condition number one and three. I think we want to have a condition that requires the tree planting as shown... Is it on the site plan, Dylan? Or on the...
It's only on the renderings, but we could just say a tree planting beside the sidewalk between the laneway.
Okay. And also that the... All the walkways in the rear to be constructed are permeable pavers.
And I think the MetroLinks clause is also...
It's an advisory.
Advisory? Yeah. Okay. I think that's it.
All those in favor? Thank you. Mr. Akle, you have your approval.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We'll go back to item number 11.
My name is Kyokazemian, 238 Forest Hill Road.
Hold on. Hold on. We need to read the materials into the record.
All right. Item number 11. So, item number 11 is 238 Forest Hill Road. Pardon me. Purpose of the application: To alter the existing two-and-one-half-story detached dwelling by constructing a one-story front addition to the existing attached garage and a rear second-story addition. The committee had before it the following communication: Copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations; two photographs of trees on the subject property received May 12th; we also have staff report from Urban Forestry received July the 9th; and we have three signature petition in opposition, signed by owners and occupants of Number 239, 243, and 245 Forest Hill Road, received July the 9th; and correspondence in opposition from 244 Forest Hill Road, received July 10, 2025. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So, we do have the agent online, and we have three registered speakers in opposition.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Reibach.
Hi. My name is Kyokazemian.
Name and address, please.
My name is Kyokazemian, 238 Forest Hill Road. I'm the agent.
Thank you. I think we'll need a presentation, as we have folks in opposition.
Yeah, I'm here. You're looking at opposition or me?
We need... No, to you. We need a presentation, because we have folks in opposition.
Oh, sure. Yeah, yeah.
Thanks.
So, actually, we received four objections for this, and I believe they didn't review the drawings, because most of the neighbors have similar variances on their own properties. In our design, the rear second-floor addition is on the same rear vaults. There is no cantilever or further setbacks. Regarding the front setbacks, we are only proposing the lineup, the garage and the garage door to the existing front door, which is only 65 centimeters, and we are not building more than the current front setback. Regarding the FSI, the extra space is being added to the rear of the house, so it won't affect front neighbors, and many neighbors got FSI approval like this. So, I reviewed a couple of the neighbors' site plans, and they have the same setbacks like us. I don't know, so maybe they didn't review the drawings or something like that.
Is that it? Or do you have anything in addition to say? Is that it?
Yeah, but basically, initially, I was thinking this is a very minor variance, because we are building on top of the balcony on the rear side of the house.
Yeah.
And we are only just wanting to line up the garage, because they have like a big car, and they cannot like fit their car in the garage. That's like a very... I was assuming it's very minor, but when I saw that objection, I was very surprised.
All right. Thank you. Let me just see if my colleagues have any questions at this point. No? None? Okay. Thank you so much. We'll move on to the folks in opposition and come back to you in a moment.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We'll hear from Erwin Prince at this time.
Thank you. Hello, Mr. Prince? Hello. Good morning, Mr. Prince? Mr. Prince, are you there? Mr. Erwin Prince, are you there? Is Mr. Prince online at all, or not quite?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We're going to move to Ron Goldman. Hello, Ron?
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, Mr. Goldman. Good morning.
Hi. Good morning.
Could we have your name and address, please, for the record?
Ron Goldman, 243 Forest Hill Road.
Thank you. You have five minutes with your presentation. Thank you.
So, we are one of the three households that filed the letter, along with the Berstein's and the Letterman's, and I just want to communicate that we're not against development at all. We do, however, oppose overly aggressive development that will impact the neighborhood and future developments, several of which are imminent, and these precedents will have a terrible effect going forward. I don't want to be repetitive, and I know the Lettermans are going to be covering the points in detail, so I'm going to just summarize by saying that we oppose all four variances and are especially opposed to the front and side setbacks, which we believe are excessive. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Let me just see if my colleagues...
I do have a question, sir, and I guess this will go to your colleagues who have signed the petition. You each are across the road from the proposed development. What's the impact of this development directly on you?
Well, the... There's two... Directly across the street from me is a future development that has actually come up to the... Have come up to the committee and was refused their variation, their requests. And right next to me and between the Lettermans is another house that's for sale that, just by the nature of the property and the condition it's in, we are certain that it'll be developed in the near future. So, we're very sensitive to anything that pushes the variances, you know, boundaries, and we're looking ahead to that as well.
So, there's no real impact on you of this proposal, other than your concern that it sets a precedent going forward?
Well, the... As well, the fact that it's closer to the front setbacks are going to change the neighborhood to some degree, and we're... But I am quite focused on the future ramifications as well.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Goldman. Thank you.
Thanks.
Moving on to the next.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We'll now hear from Mark and Jennifer Letterman.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. and Mrs. Letterman. Good morning. Mr. and Mrs. Letterman, are you there?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We're just trying to get a hold of them. Hello, Mr....
Hello.
Yes, is this Mark and Jennifer?
Hi. Yes, this is... One second. This is Jennifer Letterman. Hi, we can't get unmuted on WebEx.
Okay, but we can hear you. Hello? We can hear you, so we can proceed.
Okay. So, I'm talking by phone, and I can hear feedback.
Sorry. Pardon me. Pardon me.
Is there any way you can unmute me on WebEx?
Hello? Ms. Letterman? Hello?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt you. Could we just have your name and address for the record? And are both of you speaking, or just one?
No. No. Only one of us. I'm the one speaking.
Okay, fine. Thank you. If you could just have your name and address, please, and you have five minutes.
Sure.
Thank you.
Jennifer Letterman, 239 Forest Hill Road. I live here with my husband and young adult daughter. Our house is directly across from the subject property. With two other neighboring households, we filed a combined letter of objection, asking the committee to decline this application, as we believe the variances are not minor according to the four tests under the Planning Act. We have provided detailed reasoning and analysis to support this conclusion. We'd like to stress that we are not against development and change. However, we want development which does not adversely interfere with the use and enjoyment of neighboring properties, potentially increase unacceptable risks, and stand as bad, possibly dangerous, precedents. Another neighbor has shared his letter, that's Mr. Prince, with us, and the neighbors at 236 Forest Hill Road, immediately adjacent on the east side to 238, contacted us on Monday on hearing about the application. They have given us their approval to object and ask for the rejection of this application. In particular, we are strongly opposed to variances 1 to 3, which represent reductions to the current bylaw requirements for the front yard setbacks, the side yard setbacks, for the front and rear additions, and the front yard landscaped open space. According to our understanding of this application, the developers are asking for their proposed addition to the existing dwelling to piggyback on existing legal non-conforming elements that are out of sync with our current zoning bylaw requirements. We are especially concerned that the 0.9-meter side setback in the front of the house provides and will continue to provide a very small space between 236, the house immediately adjacent, and 238. The amount required side yard setbacks are 1.5 meters. The zoning bylaw established this dimension for a reason, and new additions should comply with this measurement, which is not that large to begin with. As you are aware, decreased side yard setbacks in particular can create major issues of safety, fire hazards, drainage issues, and regular trespass on adjacent properties. Relying on adopting existing legal non-conforming measurements and features is not a legal right and is not a flamb dunk. We know this from our personal experience. When we decided we had to add on to our then-existing dwelling to allow for necessary space for our blind severely disabled son in 1992, to allow for the addition of an elevator, five-foot turning spaces for his manual wheelchair, widened door frames, a larger kitchen, and a day room for him at the back of the house. The planning department then told us unequivocally that we could not rely on existing legal non-conforming features from our existing dwelling, which had smaller side yard setbacks and no garage. Our design builder did not rely on these, and our addition, especially on the west side, was indented to conform to current side yard setbacks, and our rear addition was pulled in at the sides even more to do so. We were required to build a detached garage, which the existing house did not have and which we didn't really want. We were very happy with our complying addition. All this to say that these legal non-conforming features in variance 1 to 3 are not necessary to the new additions and should not be approved. They do not meet the four tests. With respect to the FSI, we have provided the committee with a page from an FSI document prepared first by city planning. It's relevant to variance 4, which indicates that proposed additions will bring the FSI to 0.69. We believe this is erroneous, as the data we have shows that the current FSI of the existing building is .77. We believe this is accurate, since our FSI is shown as .79, which is correct. We think that the committee should not make an approval on potentially erroneous information. We brought this to city staff's attention, and they said to bring it to your attention. So, we're doing so now for action. This affects massing and privacy. In conclusion, based on all my statements and based on neighborhood concerns about reduced side yard setbacks, reduced front setbacks, and reduced soft landscaping being bad, dangerous precedents for future developments, we request this application be denied.
Thank you.
If the committee chooses to approve the application, we respectfully request decision note that the approval relates to additions in existing dwelling only and not a brand-new development. In this way, the precedent may be somewhat limited. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Letterman. Perfect timing. Perfect timing. Let me just see if my colleagues have any questions for you at this point. None? Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any other speakers?
Through you, Mr. Chair. That is it.
That's it.
So, we can go back to the agent.
Yeah.
Hi. You're back. I wonder if you could respond to the comments you've just heard?
So, regarding the landscape, the front landscape, we don't want to touch it. So, this is existing and will be to remain. Regarding the setbacks, we are not going to go further than existing setbacks. So, in the front, it's not like a huge setback. We are going to flush it with the existing front door. Regarding the size in the additions, we are building the addition on the second floor on top of the existing main floor vaults. So, all the setbacks are like all existing. We are not going to further. Regarding the FSI, we are like .69, which is like less than many the other brand-new houses, and it's just because of adding the one master bedroom for the client. And it's not affecting the forest through road. It's on the rear side, and all the objections are from the front side of the forest through road. They are not us, not in the rear side. So, I think it's very straightforward. We are not going more than the footprint. The only thing is the more than the footprint is like a garage door, which is like being flushed with the existing front side, and that's it.
Thank you very much for that. Just before I ask my colleagues if they have any questions for you, I just want to... I'm glad you clarified the, I think it's variance number three. That's an existing circumstance, not new.
Yes.
So, that's important. And from what I could read, if I've read correctly, is that your variance number one essentially is also existing. All that's happening, what's triggering it, is the fact that you're moving slightly ahead of the existing garage.
Exactly, yes. And that's the only reason, because they got a big car, and that garage is very old. They just want to make it bigger. That's it.
Thank you. Let me just see if my colleagues have any questions for any comments. None? Thank you. Thank you. We'll just take it into committee and come up with a resolution for this particular application.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Colleagues, any thoughts, any comments? Or shall I start it? Oh, Mr. Reed. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, as you said, the front yard setback is just lining it up with the rest of the house, so that's not really a significant change. And the rear yard... So, I see what the opponent is trying to say, is that she thinks that it should be, you know, any extension should follow the setback, even if the front doesn't. But there's two things here. First of all, it is a second floor, so we already have the existing setback in all practical terms. And also, these setbacks are actually still very, very large, like .9 meters in a lot of the city is actually what's required. These are actually very generous setbacks, and they're not going to have any significant impact on the neighbors. So, I think this is really... Honestly, this is really quite minor, quite thoughtful, and I think eminently supportable. I'm happy to move a motion, listen if my... Yeah, okay. I'll move a motion to approve these variances with force recondition number two, for the reasons I've stated.
Thank you kindly. Any... A second, please? Thank you, Mr. Reed. All those in favor? Thank you. You have your approval, sir. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We're just going to move forward to item number 14, and then we'll return to item number 13. Okay. Sorry, we have the agent, so we'll continue with item 13.
So, wait, where are we now?
13, 14.
We're on item number 13 now, because we already dealt with item 12.
All right. Item number 13 is 75 Glen Edith Drive. The purpose of the application is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling with existing rear second-story platform by constructing a third-story addition with two rear north terraces and one side west third-story terrace. Committee had before it copy of site, a plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, 14 photographs of the subject property received 1st of May. Presentation materials from the agent received July the 8th. Staff report from Urban Forestry received July 9th. And we have seven form letters in support, signed by owners and occupants of 1640 1991 Glen Edith Drive, 71 Glen Edith Drive, 83 Glen Edith Drive, and 1 Glen Edith Drive.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We also did receive a very late comment from TRCA. I can ask the presenter to present that under very late materials, and there's no objection from the TRCA. We do have the agent online. No registered speakers for this item.
Thank you. Number 13. Mr. Bronskill, are you there? Mr. Bronskill, are you there?
Mr. Chair, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you, Mr. Bronskill. Good morning.
Oh, sorry.
Name and address, please.
Apologies.
Oh, no problem.
Apologies, Mr. Chair. I'm just on the phone and for the first time doing it that way. Last name's Bronskill, first initial D for David. My address, 333 Bay Street, Suite 3400, Toronto, Ontario, here on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you. We don't have anybody in opposition, so we don't need a presentation for them, the non-existent. Let me just see if my colleagues would like a brief story. Nope? Oh, my goodness, a good day. Day is getting better.
Thank you. I can't see the panel, Mr. Chair, but I thank them.
I think they're all happy. Thank you. I don't think there's... Let me just see if anybody has any... Nothing at all? Oh, my goodness, okay. Oh, I think we're good. If I'm not mistaken, I think part of this particular structure is that it's the third-floor addition is basically set in from...
That is correct, sir. Yes.
Very nicely so. Thank you. And none of the terraces protrude out sufficient for privacy screenings, which is also great. Thank you. Well, I think we'll take it into...
Thank you, sir. You've done my presentation for me.
We'll take it into committee and look for an outcome. Thank you. Mr. Clay?
Thanks, Chair. You know, these proposals are often in context, and if you look at the context of this little, very small, street, what is being proposed would fit, I think, quite comfortably in with the existing housing stock. They're large lots. As you noted, the proposal has the third-story setback. The height is very minimally over what is permitted, and the other variances are really quite minor. And no opposition from the neighbors, which is, I think, in some respects unusual, but good. And I think Mr. Bronskill or his client has done a really good job of having discussions with the neighbors and buying them off or whatever. Sorry, David, I would never suggest that you do that.
Just gratuitous.
But I think it's an eminently supportable application for those reasons. So, if my colleagues don't have anything to add, I'm happy to move a motion to approve this application. And there are no conditions.
None at all.
RNFP?
No.
Okay. No, they had no conditions on...
No conditions.
There is a report, but no conditions from them. So, I think we're good with no conditions. Okay?
Mr. Reed? Thank you, Mr. Reed. Seconds of motion? All those in favor? Thank you. Mr. Bronskill, you have unanimous approval. Thank you. Moving on to, is it item 14 now? Thank you. Item number 14.
You need a break? Okay? You're good, keep going?
Maybe five minutes.
Yeah. Thank you. We can take a five-minute break or take it a 10-minute?
Five minutes.
Five minutes. Okay, thank you. Five-minute break. We'll be back at 22, 20 to 12. Thank you. And we begin again. Item number 14. Item number 14 is 225 Caledonia Road. Purpose of the application is to construct a new one-story detached ancillary building, a one-car garage in the rear yard, butting the laneway. The existing garage will be demolished. We have before us a single variance. The committee had before it the following communications: copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations; 12 photographs of the subject property received May the 15th; and presentation materials received from the agent on July the 11th. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent online. No registered speakers for this item.
Thank you. Ms. Evangelista, are you there?
There we go.
Hi, Ms. Evangelista. Name and address, please.
Good morning. Good morning. I.D. Evangelista, 53 Bentworth Avenue, Toronto.
Thank you very much, and good morning. We don't have anybody in opposition, so we won't need a presentation there. I don't think my colleagues don't appear to have any questions or need for a presentation, because you presented us with a very complex application by the looks of it with a single variance.
Yeah, very straightforward.
Thank you very much. We'll take it into committee and hopefully come up with a quick response for you.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. Mr. Reed, thank you.
Thanks, Chair. I'm happy to take this one. This is basically rebuilding what's there, and so you've got side yard setback variances for the garage. And in this case, I think it's actually more desirable to not have the gap between the garage. It's the way that this pattern of development happens along Caledonia, and I think it makes for a more efficient use of the site without having relatively unusable spaces on the sides. So, I think this is a good application. I move approval without condition.
Thank you very much. Do we have a second, sir? Mr. McKay, thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. Ms. Evangelista, you have your approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
You too. Take care. Moving on to item number 15. Moving on to item number 15. Item number 15 is 5 Zorrin Avenue. The purpose of this application is to construct a new two-story ancillary building containing two laneway suites with a basement walkout in the rear yard of the existing two-and-one-half-story semi-detached apartment building abutting the side laneway. There will be a total of nine residential units, dwelling units, on this lot, seven units within the main building and two units within the ancillary building. Committee had before it the following communication: Copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations; five photographs of the subject property received May the 20th; and decision numbers A0563/21TEY and A0565/24TEY affecting the subject property. We also have staff reports from the manager at Transportation Services received July the 3rd. Okay.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We have the agent online, no registered speakers for this item.
Thank you. Hello, good morning. Is that Xiaoyong Yu?
Good morning, this is Xiaoyong Yu.
Hello.
Agent. Hello, can you hear me?
I, we can't hear you, I'm afraid. Can you speak up?
Can you hear me?
A little bit more.
Can you hear me?
Not really. We heard the cough.
Can you hear me now?
Ah, excellent, yes, please. Perfect.
Okay, great. My name is Samuel Xiaoyong, and from Proto View Architect, and the agent.
Thank you. Let me just see if my colleagues require a presentation or have any questions for you. Questions? Okay. Mr. Reed?
Yeah, a couple of questions. First, you saw the transportation condition that you have to hand over a part of the laneway to the city, convey a part of the laneway to the city. Hello?
Is it you?
Hello? Yes.
You've seen the report?
Have you seen that report?
Uh, no. Okay, you can go forward.
It's a transportation report.
There's a report from transportation? You haven't seen that? That they require conveyance of a part of the, part of the property to, to widen the laneway?
Okay, yes, that is still available.
Okay. So, and that means you'll have to move the bicycle parking? Is that going to be possible?
Oh, yes, that's true.
Okay. A second question. So a previous approval of the apartments required two bicycle parking spaces. Are you providing additional biking, bicycle parking spaces with the laneway suites?
Uh, yes, we provide, right now we have three in the bicycle parking, and but we can move to another location.
So how many bicycle parking, how much bicycle parking?
Yes, another two. Two.
So there'll be four in total?
Uh, three, uh, in the, previously they have another, another three or four. I, I can't remember. But we can add another two.
Okay, so there'll be four in total?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. McKay?
Just on the lane widening. So yes, transportation is essentially asking for a conveyance to widen the lane and they're asking for zero point nine eight meters. So it's, it's almost a full meter. So you're aware of that, sir?
Yes, I will.
Any other questions or comments at this point? No? Just for my part, when I saw the application and your presentation materials, essentially it looks like a second house behind the existing house, which is quite substantial, as a massing effect. But given the specific location at the, in that particular laneway, I, I see this as a, as a possibly reasonable location for that structure. But other than that, I don't think I have any other questions for you. Let me see if we'll take it into committee perhaps at this point? And see if there's any discussion? The colleagues. Mr. Reed?
Yeah, I mean, exactly as you said, the specific location, I think, allows for this kind of large laneway suite, which normally I think may be a concern. But in this case, it's on a laneway. It backs onto a parking lot. It's basically just off the main street. So to me, you know, in this particular situation, this is actually a, a, a positive development to provide additional housing in this area. And I think, especially with the laneway conveyance, the laneway is obviously a little irregular at the moment and that will help straighten out the laneway. So in a sense, an additional benefit is provided thanks to this, thanks to this development. So I, I think this is eminently supportable. I'm happy to make a motion unless, yeah, okay. So I'll make a motion to approve these variances for the reasons I've stated, with the transportation condition and with the condition that a total of at least four bike parking spaces be provided on the site.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Do we have a second? Mr. McKay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Reed's moved the motion to approve, seconded by Mr. McKay. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Yu, you have your approval. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Take care. All right. Number 16 was deferred. So we move on to item number 17. Item number 17 is 778 Windermere Avenue. The purpose of the application is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a third-story addition, pardon me, front bay window and a rear three-story addition with a ground-floor rear deck with stairs. Also to alter the existing one-story garage by enlarging the space and raising the roof height. A recent application for a new three-story detached dwelling and a new detached ancillary structure garage was refused in minor variance decision A0222/24TEY. And the appeal refused variances not authorized in T-Lab decision in order 24171657S4504TLAB in 2024. The committee had before it the following communication: Copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations; four photographs of the subject property received May the 12th; T-Lab decision in order number 24171657S4504 affecting the subject property; decision number A0222/24TEY affecting the subject property; and planning justification report from the agent received July the 9th, 2025. We also have staff report from Urban Forestry received July the 9th, 2025. We have correspondence in opposition from 784 Windermere Avenue, 780 Windermere Avenue, 782 Windermere Avenue, 783 Windermere Avenue, and 785 Windermere Avenue.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent here in person. We also have a registered speaker here in person.
Thank you. I wonder if we could have your name and address, please? And if both of you are speaking, could we have a name and address for both, please?
Yes. Good morning, it's still the morning. Mr. Chair and committee, David Eagleman, Associate and Registered Professional Planner, Design Plan Services, Inc., 87 Skyway Avenue, Suite 200. And my colleague Maya will be speaking for the majority of the presentation.
Thank you. If we could get your address as well, please, and name?
Yeah, my name is Maya Marchesi. I'm a planner at Design Plan Services as well, located at 87 Skyway Avenue.
Thank you. Since we do have folks in opposition, could I have a presentation, please?
Yes, of course. Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm here today to seek relief for several variances related to the proposed third-story and three-story rear addition to the existing two-story dwelling, as well as the addition to the existing ancillary structure, a detached garage. This is a revised application following a 2024 committee refusal, which was subsequently followed by a T-Lab refusal. It was refused at T-Lab due to a lack of evidence provided. Through this new application and proposal, we've taken steps to meaningfully respond to previous concerns raised by the committee as well as the neighbors. Compared to the 2024 application, the main building length and depth variances have been eliminated, as well as the lot coverage variance related to the detached garage. The FSI, rear yard soft landscaping and ancillary floor area variances have all been improved through this application and the only variances that remain unchanged from the previous application are variances that reflect existing conditions and are being maintained. The first variances, first variance is related to the main wall height. We're proposing 9.68 meters where 8.5 meters is permitted. This increase is due to the flat roof design. However, I'd like to note that the dwelling remains under the overall permitted height of 11 meters. There are also comparable approvals on Windermere and within the neighborhood as detailed in my submitted justification letter. Variance two is related to the FSI, a slight increase of 0.81 times the lot area is proposed, where 0.8 times the lot area is permitted. This represents an increase of only 2.1 square meters, which will be distributed over three stories. Variances three and four are related to the side yard setbacks. The north side yard setback is 1.07 meters and the south side yard setback is 0.15 meters from the main dwelling. Both of these reflect the existing condition and are proposed to be maintained. There is also a south side yard setback of 0.14 meters for the deck. The addition in deck will follow the existing footprint of the main building. The side yard setbacks will continue to have little to no impact further than what currently exists. Variance five is related to the roof eaves. This variance also reflects an existing condition and is consistent with several approvals in the neighborhood. The eaves projection itself is in keeping with the bylaw at 0.15 meters, where a projection of 0.9 meters is permitted. And the variance is triggered due to the existing side yard setback, which results in the eaves being located zero meters from the south lot line. Similar approvals are detailed in my submitted justification letter. Variance six is related to the rear yard soft landscaping. We're proposing 40% or 73 square meters, where 50% or 91.9 square meters is required. I also note that the currently existing rear yard soft landscaping is 88 square meters. Therefore, the proposal would result in a 15-square-meter reduction of what currently exists. The proposal still maintains a functional and usable rear yard soft landscaped area that supports outdoor amenity space and drainage and is consistent with previous approvals as detailed in my submitted justification letter. Additionally, I'd like to emphasize that the rear yard setback complies and the depth, length and coverage variances from the 2024 application have been eliminated to improve the rear yard soft landscaped area. Variance seven is for the ancillary building floor area. We're seeking relief for 45.7 square meters, where 40 square meters is permitted. This is an existing condition and the footprint is being maintained as the owners wish to respect the concerns that were brought up regarding the floor area and coverage from the 2024 application. The only change being made to the detached garage is the height, which is compliant. Variance eight is for the setbacks of the ancillary building, 0.21 meters from the north lot line, 0.8 from the south lot line. These are also existing conditions. I've reviewed the objection letters, some of which also objected to the 2024 application. And while the proposal may not fully satisfy those concerns, we have made meaningful revisions in direct response to that feedback. And overall, it's my professional opinion that the requested variances are minor and meet the four tests set out in 45-1 of the Planning Act and represent good planning.
You did it. Oh my goodness, I was just about to jump up and say your time's up, but you did it. Thank you so much. Thank you. Let me just see if my colleagues have any questions for you at this point. If not, move on to the folks in opposition. Thank you. Do we have anybody here? If you don't mind taking a seat back in the gallery, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Name and address, please.
This one. Do you want to stand?
Excellent.
Sorry.
Now you're on candid camera.
Thank you. My name is Anthony Chong and this is my wife Natalie Chong. And we live at 780 Windermere Avenue. That's immediately the property north of, of the 778, which is the property in question.
You have five minutes. Please go ahead and do your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So my wife Natalie and I are here today to formally register our objection to the proposed development. Our homes are separated by just six feet. And in a setting this tight, any change in scale has an outsized impact. The applicant is requesting eight variances, many that relate to massing, height and soft landscaping, all of which are meant to protect neighboring properties like ours. We are particularly concerned with the proposed wall height of 9.68 meters, which exceeds the bylaw by over a meter. Combined with the extension of the building's depth and the addition of a full third story, this is going to create an overwhelming vertical wall right next to us. This will eliminate our access to our morning and midday sun, severely darken our south and west-facing rooms and significantly reduce our quality of life. We're also alarmed by the reduction in soft landscaping to 40% of the rear yard, where 50% is required. With much of the yard already taken up by a large garage, a deck, this change will erode the green space that we rely on for privacy, drainage and livability. Since both the original submission in 2024 and the revised plans have not come close to the allowable soft landscaping required, to us it seems clear that this lot is not designed to support two large structures of this size. In summary, we'd like to echo some of our neighbors' concerns around overbuilding and granting various variances on developments like this as it would send, as it would set a dangerous precedent for future developments, as well as undermining the long-established character and livability of our street. We would also like to highlight and support our neighbors' concerns about the garage height and massing, further reducing privacy and adding to the cumulative negative effect of this proposal. More broadly, this proposal sends out a character with the rest of the neighborhood, where homes remain modest in scale and sensitive to the spacing between them. The drawings and visual simulations that we've submitted in our letter clearly show how this proposed structure will loom over adjacent properties and disrupt the streetscape. In our view, this application fails on all four tests under Section 45 of the Planning Act. It does not maintain the intent of the official plan or zoning bylaws. We do not consider it minor and we do not think it's desirable for the appropriate development of the land. For these reasons, we respectively ask the committee to deny the application as proposed. I think just to add one other point on there, we, we do acknowledge that there has been some modify since the 2024 application. But I think the, the main ones that we're concerned about in terms of like the massing, the vertical wall, the soft landscaping, those have not really materially changed to go from, you know, 37% soft landscaping to 40% still falls quite short of the 50% that, that's required. And also, even with the adjustments to the, to the main house itself, that vertical wall and that massing is still going to materially affect us. and that massing is still going to materially affect us. Thank you for your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Let me just see if my colleagues have any questions for you. Any questions, folks? None? Thank you very much.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We'll call back the agent.
Thank you, if you don't mind responding to what you've heard.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to respond to Mr. Chong's concerns. First, speaking to the wall height, I understand there are concerns with the massing. We did remove the depth and length variance, which were concerns of the 2024 application, and the wall height of 9.68 meters does align with other approvals in the area. There are similar main wall heights at 636 Windermere of 9.55 meters, on Willard of, there's two approvals of 9.63 meters, 9.6 meters, and Beersford Avenue has approvals of 10.97 meters, 9.74 meters. So I believe that this is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. And again, I want to emphasize that it is still within the permitted overall dwelling height, under 11 meters. I also want to speak to the soft landscaping, as that is a concern that was brought up as well. Again, I want to emphasize that depth and length variances were removed, coverage variances were removed, and the soft landscaping has improved from the 2024 application. And again, it's 15-square-meters reduction of what currently exists. I'll also note that part of this proposal is a rear yard deck, which is not captured as soft landscaping, but it's not impermeable, so there will still be opportunity for infiltration through the wooden deck in the rear yard. And again, the rear yard setback complies as well. In regard to the character of the neighborhood and the setbacks, these are existing conditions. The setback is remaining the same as what it is and has been part of the character of the neighborhood and will continue to be. And I think that covers everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I ask my colleagues if they have any questions, I do have a question. Variance number six, which is the rear yard soft landscaping, reduction from 50 to 40, and variance number seven, which is the total floor area for the garage. And I also note that the garage looks like, that the height request for the garage is you basically turning a two-car garage into a four-car garage, because you've got lifts in them.
Through you, Mr. Chair. That's correct. The floor area of the ancillary building is not changing. It was, in the 2024 application, proposed to be enlarged, but the footprint is remaining the same. It's just building up vertically to allow four cars in the garage, but the height is compliant.
But the floor area of that item, sorry, variance number seven, that request, I wonder if it's triggering, and I'll wait for your response, triggering the soft landscaping issue as well?
Through you, Mr. Chair. It may be contributing to the deficiency in soft landscaping, but it's not triggering it, as it's not changing. The floor area is remaining the same. Yeah, and as I noted, the soft landscaping that's currently existing in the rear yard is 88 square meters, so as it exists is already deficient from the 91.9 square meters that is required.
And just one last quick one. This is a single-family residence that we're talking about?
Yes, that's correct. Through you, Mr. Chair. This is just to accommodate a growing family.
With four cars.
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Just an observation.
The owner is a car aficionado.
Thank you. Let me just see if my colleagues have any questions for you. None? Okay, Mr. Reed? None?
No questions.
So perhaps we'll take it into committee now and look for a decision. Anybody want to offer an opening line? Mr. Clay?
Yeah, sure, I will. I do recall this application previously, and I think the previous application was a little excessive, and I think that's why the committee at the time decided to refuse it. But I think now, I mean, T-Lab irrespective, I don't really think T-Lab actually weighed in necessarily on the merits of the case. It was more process, I think, than anything. But I think now, with the changes that remove the length and the depth and, you know, make several improvements over the last applications, we often say that, you know, when you get a refusal and when you return, it's good to see that there are attempts to try and do the best to conform with the bylaws, or at least minimize the degree of variances. And I think in this instance, I think that has been achieved. I will acknowledge the agent's response to the soft landscaping issue in the rear yard, that there is a wooden deck, and the wooden deck will allow water to permeate through, and I presume there's nothing hard underneath the deck. It is gravel or grass or dirt. So I'm not as concerned with the rear yard landscaping on this one, given that consideration. So I personally, I think, given the changes that have been made from the previous application, I think this is an improved proposal now.
Mr. Reed?
Thanks, Chair. I agree with Larry's points. I just want to acknowledge the neighbors, the, I think there will be an impact on them, certainly, and it's going to, it's going to change their enjoyment of their property. But what's, the built form that's being proposed is almost, is within, basically, an as-of-right, an as-of-right design, apart from the, basically, a meter extra in height. I'm very happy to see the removal of the length and depth and the coverage variances. I think that's gone a long way. But just to, just to acknowledge that, yes, there is going to be an impact on the neighbors, but that impact is essentially within what the bylaw perceives as allowed. So I'll support this.
In the absence of that, I'll move, happy to move a motion on this one, Chair. I think I'll move approval of this application, subject to forestry condition number two. I think that's it.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
I'll second that, please, Chair.
All those in favor? Thank you. All opposed? Thank you. The motion carries. Okay. Yeah, your rule. Thank you. Moving on to item number 18. Item number 18 is 44 Argyle Street. Purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-and-one-half-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a rear third-story addition and a front second-story balcony. We have before us two applica-, sorry, two variances in this application. The committee had before it the following communication copy of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations, two photographs of trees on the subject property received May the 20th, covering letter from the agent received on July the 9th, more correspondence from the agent July the 8th, presentation materials from the agent received July the 8th, sun, sorry, shadow studies, sunshadow studies received July the 8th, and tree site plan received May the 20th. We also have correspondence in opposition from 46 Argyle Street, received June the 26, 2025.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent online and one registered speaker in opposition online.
Thank you. Stephanie Wong, are you there?
Yes, Stephanie Wong, 17 Elphondale Crescent.
Thank you. Good morning. Since we do have somebody in opposition, I wanted you to please have a presentation.
Sure. It is afternoon, so good afternoon, chair and committee members. My name is Stephanie Wong, with address 17 Elphondale Crescent, and I am the agent for the owners at 44 Argyle Street. The owners would like to alter their existing two-and-a-half-story dwelling by proposing a rear third-floor addition with a second-floor front balcony. We have requested two variances. Variance one refers to the permitted maximum height of the exterior portion of main walls, where the total width of each cannot exceed a height of 8.5 meters for more than 70% of the total width. The current east elevation has a 67% width of wall, that is eight and a half meters. With the proposed addition, this adds one and a half meters more to the width and brings the percentage to 58%, a 9% difference from existing. Similarly, on the west side, the current width of wall is 75.5%. The proposed addition adds 1.7 meters of wall width and reduces this percentage by about 10% to 65.2%. The difference is 5% less than the permitted 70%. If you refer to our supporting material, we've, of the proposed east and west elevations, we've indicated the extent of existing above eight and a half meters and highlighted the additional width of wall from the proposed addition. Also, in our supporting material of neighborhood precedents, we have referenced the east adjoining property at 42 Argyle with a similar third-floor addition to what is being proposed by my client. The neighboring addition extends over the portion of the footprint that is setback from the property line. In comparison, our proposal is shorter in length and aligns the north extent of the addition with the second floor below, where the footprint spans the full width of the property. Also wanted to reference some 92 givens with a similar third-floor addition. The second variance concerns the proposed south-facing second-floor balcony encroachments into the front and side yard setbacks. As a proposed platform takes the current entry canopy roof size into account, the front yard setback encroachment of 0.97 meters and the zero side yard setback are existing conditions. We've noted in our supporting material precedents, a few properties along Saw Street, where the second-floor front balconies also extend to the side property lines and into the front yard setback. I'd also like to quickly take this opportunity to acknowledge the letter of opposition we received from 46 Argyle, my neighbor's client to the west, and address their concerns for the resulting reduction in sunlight from the proposed third-floor addition. From this, we prepared a series of sunshadow studies comparing the current massing of 44 Argyle with a proposed top-floor addition. These were done at four times of the year around midday, when my client's property affects the sunlight exposure of their neighbor's west wall the most. These are included on our supporting documentation. We found that the study showed little change from the amount of direct sunlight perceived currently. My client presented these studies to the owners of 46 Argyle, showing the impact the proposed addition would have to their current sun exposure. To close, the first variation, sorry, the first variance permits my client to optimize the current low-ceiling space of their third floor with an addition that essentially raises the north-sloped roof. With this added height, it gives more living space to a similar-sized footprint and allows room for a three-piece bath. The second variance converts the current front porch canopy into a second-floor balcony, and the front and side yard encroachments are existing conditions from this canopy. We feel that these two variances are minor in nature. There are samples of similar third-floor additions in the neighborhood, and the proposed front balcony is consistent with the streetscape language in the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Let me just see if there's a question. Thank you. Oops. Still there. It was me. I fixed it. Thank you, Stanis. Let me just see if we have any questions for you at the moment? None? Okay, thank you. We can move on to the.
Yes, we'll hear from the owner at 42 Argyle Street.
Thank you. Justin Riviere, are you there?
Hey.
Name and address, please.
So my name is Justin Riviere. I'm at 42 Argyle Street in Toronto.
Thank you. Five minutes.
So I don't think I'll use the whole five minutes. I was talking with the owner of 44 Argyle with respect to the, to the back addition. They did come to me about, I want to say about a year ago, on, or sorry, with preliminary drawings on what they're proposing at that time. At that time, they were proposing an addition that would actually extend our shared garbage area to the property line, which I, which I refused. So I want to ensure that any, any addition there would not be materially extending the width of the property line and result in an overhang to, to, to the property line with my, with my asset. Again, they, they did say that the revised, and just to the, to the speaker's comments, they're simply just lifting the slanted part of that, of that current, current improvement, which I, I don't have material issue with. What I do have concerns with is the, is the front balcony. As you can see, it's, it's basically rowhouse structure. My house is literally attached to, to, to 44 Argyle, and any extension of a balcony from their, from their bedroom would bring privacy concerns to me. You could probably, I would assume you'd be able to, depending on, you know, whether it's a Juliet. I don't think it's a Juliet, but I would suspect you'd be able to see, like, right into my, into my bedroom from that, from that balcony. So that is my, that is my material concern there. And I think the neighbor at 46 Argyle had a similar concern with respect to her property. So I wanted to make that, make that known, that I do have opposition as related to that, to that balcony. And assuming that, you know, the back addition is simply just lifting the slanted part, I am okay with that, however.
Thank you very much. Let me just see if my colleagues have any questions for you. None? Okay, seeing none, we'll go back to the agent for some feedback. Ms. Wong, are you there?
Yes, I am here.
You've heard the comments, if you don't mind responding, please.
Yes, I heard both comments regarding the addition in the rear. So just to clarify that the understanding is correct, that the roof, the sloped roof is essentially raised, and there will be no overhang into that shared space, that setback between both properties. So the extent of where that, on this picture that you see, or this elevation, is just the extent of the wall that is exposed, and that line there, it won't extend past that north wall.
So, sorry, just, just, I just have a quick question. So where the.
I'm sorry. Can you please stop? You've had a moment. We've got the agent responding right now. Sorry, Ms. Wong. Please continue.
Yes, so just where the, where you see the roof deck of the second floor there, so at that same point, that is the extent of where the third-floor addition would go to.
Thank you. Any other comments that you have?
I think the comment regarding the privacy issue for the front platform, my clients, they would be open to putting a privacy screen, so that would be no concerns or with views into the adjacent second floor of the 42 Argyle.
Thank you. Let me just see if my colleagues have any questions for you. Let me just see if my colleagues have any questions for you. If not, I'll just make a couple of observations. I just do want to thank you for your presentation materials. I think they were, they were excellent, because it suddenly presents me with a picture of exactly what you're doing. From what I can see, the, the request that you have, the extension you're putting on, it mimics your neighbor next door at forty-four, oh, sorry, forty-two.
Correct.
And the only difference between your application at the moment and what your neighbor has is the balcony at the front?
Balcony at the front, and also forty-two does extend a little further into the second floor, that setback, where they noted that shared space in between the properties, he had concerns that we would overhang into that.
Okay. Thank you. Let me just see if my colleague, any of my colleagues have any questions for your comments? None? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Wong. We're going to take it into committee and look for a decision. Thank you. Mr. Reed?
Yeah, I'm happy to move a motion on this. These are really, really quite minor variances, very common. It's not really that extensive an extension in the back. I also say that I think balconies in the front actually contribute to the city, contribute eyes on the street, and, you know, a sense of connection between housing and the public realm. So I think a balcony in the front is a great idea. I'm glad that the applicant is open to privacy screens, which I think should address the neighbor's concern. So I would move that we approve these variances with the condition that privacy screens be added to the front balcony on the east and west side.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Okay, thank you. All those in favor with the one condition? Thank you very kindly. Ms. Wong, you have your approval with the one condition of the screen. Thank you for that. And with that, we conclude this morning's agenda, and we'll reconvene at two o'clock, I believe. Thank you very much.